It's the cord, because the cord wasn't long enough.
All right, we'll call the meeting to order at 6:34. Any input? Consent calendar, did everyone read the items that were on the consent calendar?
Yep.
Call and consent?
Yes.
Prerog by consent. Hartman heads, George.
Apparently this bill came in after they closed the book, so Caroline, any questions on the PO for lumber, some of the lumber from the bins?
Okay. I'll move purchase order 1784 to Middleton Building Supply for $434.71 for lumber for the recycling.
Okay. You've got to start putting where you're going to take your companies.
We're sending a PO now. Yeah, original PO, we had the last lead.
So building maintenance for transfer stations?
So this will come out of 2019?
No, it has to come out of 2020, because...
All right, any further discussion or any questions? Okay, is this going to finish what you need to have that stuff all done?
We may need some small pieces of stuff when we get ready to, tomorrow, we're going to try to tackle that. The weather's good now, too.
What's those roofing things that are around the corner? That's what this is? All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
I have a PO for Urban Tree. We have a tree on Clement Road that's only being held up by a couple of other trees. It's already going into the road, and that's going to come down. It just passed in development.
Passed what, I'm sorry?
Passed that new development on Clement Road on the left.
Okay.
Tree just being held up by, it's a good-sized tree, just being held up by some other trees, so we can get that taken down. And also, there's two stumps that we cut trees down on Locust Street that were in the sidewalk. They had that stump ground up. So I got a PO for $2,000 for Urban Tree out of the tree we made this money.
Okay, so...
I'll move purchase order 1785 to Urban Tree Service for $2,000 for tree removal on Clement Road and stump grinding on Locust.
Seconded, okay. The one that fell in the cemetery, did that get taken care of? It's gone? Okay, I haven't been that way.
We took it out.
Okay, so it's all, that's all taken care of, and you guys did that work? Okay.
Yeah, cleaned it up last week.
Okay.
So this is up to $2,000, or?
Nope. $1,000 for the grinding, $1,000 for night 75 for the tree.
Okay. Any questions?
No.
All right. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Do you have the standard and everything else? Oh.
Just curious.
We got no PO, anything?
Anything for the vendors? I'm hoping that your winter's over.
You're not alone. Back to the P for the odds, Eddie.
Oh, there you go, there you go. I'm planning on going to go for probably another two months, I thought we've got a bribe on.
Well, I wasn't planning on, people would be crazy since we had to get it out of the dealership, so... We hopefully get all the bugs out of the new truck, spend back the dealership a couple times, so...
Really?
Electrical issues, but it was combined between when they put the body on, sat there, couple crossed wires, driving down the road in the backup, the line would go on. Middle of the night, people don't appreciate that, do they? And you can shut it off. Then the PO stopped working, the Swiss was only giving out half the power, so they're swapping out all the stuff, but we hopefully get the bugs out of it now, and it seems...
I'll warranty, all right?
Oh, it's nothing causing us, except for the time to run it back and put the dealership, either London area or Rochester, so...
The ones, yeah, yeah.
They don't do, I mean, they came to us the first time when it was, you know, but they said it's like that. It's time-consuming, electrical's always time-consuming, so... So, other than that, I'm waiting on pricing on sidewalks, we can talk about that pretty soon.
Are you going to start getting quotes for paving?
We have a, the one, project with Sligo Road is going to be about 10% more than last year's with the prices. Nothing's finally, we'll wait and see what the budget is, if I'm going to call Chris and have him come in, so we can get on top of it first of the year again.
Right, I mean, it worked out last year, and then we were slated to have that done early, it didn't work out that way. Because of the weather.
Right, but at least having them on board, instead of wait till October, this November to do projects. If we have it again.
Fingers crossed that when we get our budget and not defaulting.
No, I'll just wait and see, I'll see what they're offering, then I'll get ahold of them and talk about that. So, other than that, we're going to try to get the sad dinner roosted up over the bins tomorrow, so...
Nice article in Foster's.
Yes.
Nice.
Doing the radio. Well, in a couple weeks. Next week, I think.
Friday next week.
What do you mean, a radio board?
So, as a result of Strapper Regional Plannings meeting last week, promoted by Strapper Regional Planning and Northeast Resource Recovery Associates, Rollinsford's really hitting the news as a progressive recycling community. A lot of people are not taking the initiative to try to save, and so they're, it's being talked about. And so, people are following up with Ed, trying to get more information. And so, the radio show is one example of that, it's a small, local Portsmouth station that wants to do a one-hour presentation. So, Ed and I are going to go do that a week from Friday. And then, in May, is the conference of the Northeast Resource Recovery Association, and they've asked Ed to do a presentation there.
Nice.
About what we've been doing here.
Nice.
So that's really exciting.
Cool. Now let Ed talk a little bit, I know that you're trash cactus, and you really like to do, they're composting all the time.
It is, yes. It's his show.
The meeting last week was very, very informative, and trying to get these other towns get on board, joining, you know, try to get together and do things together, and really starting, starting the traffic going, we shouldn't be going. You know, so hopefully we can get something out of that, but...
Good, wow, that's awesome.
I'm really trying to get a conversation going regionally about it. Senator Waters is proposing legislation that would bring back some money from our tipping fees, because some of that goes to the state, and bring some of that revenue back to the communities so that we can invest in some kind of infrastructure that could help regionally, like, you know, it could be a glass crushing machine, it could be an incinerator, it could be any kind of whatever that we could use either individually or as a region. But, you know, it's, it's, it's a really complicated problem, but everybody, all the communities have something that they could potentially lend, you know, we have a little bit of land, we have some equipment. Summersworth's got a little bit of land, Dover doesn't have land, but they have, you know, a lot of waste and the resources to look into options. And, you know, I just think if we work together, we could find a way to do something better within the next few years, and at the very least, plan for the inevitable closure of the land, of the waste management landfill, because that capacity is finite, so we should be planning on what the next thing is. And after our contract, you know the prices are going to go up, so we, you know, we have to stay on top of it.
Now, is Dover south of Mass Road?
Well, so that's where their Community Services Building is, and that's where you go for hazardous waste day, but they don't have the land to be doing what we're doing as far as recycling is going.
I don't think there was stuff there, I don't know why.
They do have demo, you can bring your demo stuff there, you pay to give it to you, WTV and stuff.
Yeah.
But they don't have the full, you know, they do most side recyclers.
Oh, that's right.
They just renewed their single stream.
Yep, okay.
Recycling for an increase of a million dollars to their budget.
One year.
One year, a million dollars. But their city council wanted to continue single stream. Summersworth, I think their contract's up this summer, so... It's a good time to keep talking about it, because, you know, we need those communities, because we don't have the volume, because we're small.
Right.
So if we work together, we could benefit from their volume.
Absolutely.
Charge them a tipping fee, and then make the money on the plastics, and stuff like that.
It's doing well, very happy about it.
He's turning, yeah. We'll see.
See how long we stay. We just sent people to Rochester.
That's what I thought, what's the...
Capital.
The capital R.
If you could, I couldn't, I couldn't do it recently.
I just...
Which, which...
I have them in there.
Which network was it? T O R guest.
Thank you, you too, George.
T O R guest is the one that I couldn't find the password for, but there is...
I went to the bronze, please, yeah, that's what I did as well.
And that's fine, you can use that one.
Yep. Fire, please?
We'll see how far we get, we just sent companies up to Rochester's.
We may be even in a minute.
Yeah.
Try to get as far as we can get. First big business is purchase orders for our door issues. Couple thoughts with Caroline, get over that, what we've been going through with doors, and you guys were aware of that last week. Two of them. They're both all tied together, the first one, number 1810, is a two overhead door, it's for $374. And this is for when they came in to check why we had the burning smell, the solenoid had caught on fire. So we replaced the solenoid, they diagnosed what problems we needed, which will lead to the second one, so there's the first one.
I'll move purchase order 1810 to Overhead Door Company for $374 to replace a solenoid garage door.
Seconded, all right. Any discussions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye. Second one I have, to piggyback on the back of that one, is kind of put some of the pieces together, when you were there, we were having electrical issues. These were the two issues that the door was causing. When the motors start to fail, they draw too much juice, and when it did that, these are 20-amp fuses. It started working up against that 20-amp, so it started shorting arc and whatnot, and that's one of the reasons we may have the solenoid issue. So, SEMO came in and found these issues and replaced these for us, he had no cost. I'm sure it would have easily been a $250 electrical mill for somebody to come in and do that, but he did it for us, because he's that good of a guy for the most part.
Who did it?
SEMO Electrical?
Why did, why did they do that for him?
Because he likes us. He's a resident, he appreciates what the fire department and everybody does, so he was willing to do that. But the kicker to that is there's some other issues that we need to have fixed, they're a reasonably short timeframe, and we were going to use him, so he was giving us a quote for that type of stuff, but this part of it, he just didn't, because our goodness, it was hard.
So how do you, those are 20 amps?
Yeah.
So do they make bigger ones? I mean, how do you get that to stop?
So, the door needs to be replaced.
Exactly.
The whole door? Or the motor?
The motor.
Oh, okay.
So, the door is supposed to draw no more than 8.4 amps. It's drawing 22.1.
Okay, does that happen when something starts to fail, is that what happens?
It's old, tired, and...
Yep, it's trying to make up for that, drawing more juice to try to operate, because that was my thing, well, why don't we still 25? No, 30, you can't do that.
Okay.
So that's why we entered a place and started anew, with that end of it. And he tested the other two doors also, and those two are fine, they only draw in the 7, 8 range like they should.
Have they newer?
No, these are all...
All the old buildings?
They're all the old building, they're all the same age, the two where the car is and where the utilities sit is fine. Of course, the one with the forestry is the one that is no longer working, and he fixed the one over the tank, but those are the two that are giving us problems.
Is it because you don't use the other doors as much, is that, but what would make, if you're using them all the same, what would make it not be that way?
The doors were purchased in 1973. They were all past there, or their openers were, 1973 is when they were manufactured.
They've never been replaced?
No, I'm saying, you have two that are working fine, and then you have two that aren't. What would, is it, the amount you...
I don't think it's used so much, I think it's just luck in the jars to which one decides to go.
Fingers crossed that they'll stay.
For a while, the other, the other two, we've already had overhead door in earlier this year, because the two receiving and sending units weren't working. So they rewired both of those, so we know that part of it's working, and now we've had to test it, so the electrical side is working, so let's, again, just hope that stays that way for a little while. So, with that being said, on the other two doors, we had Overhead Door Company come back and look at both of them, they're suggesting that you need to replace them, as Sean said, they were up there since 1973. So, our original thing was only going to replace one, and that's the one that had the fire, and they gave us a quote on that, the 5380, which is here, again, just a quote, but when we found out the dual problems, we said, we'll give us a quote for two. So they've given us a quote for two, and I have the purchase order for that, it's 1811, and for two new door openers, remove the old ones, put these new ones up, rewire them, or they need to get them operating, it's 2950. That's actually from their original quote, which for one was 1580, to the 2950, they reduced it by $210 if you do the two of them. So that's where I got that, and as I kind of said before, is right now the forestry door is disabled, you can't use it, so the only way we open it is manually, and I'm afraid that somebody's going to do that throw it back or something, so it could be some other injuries coming along. Our suggestion, obviously, is PO number 1811. All right.
If you can get two people to do it, right?
What's that?
Two people can lift the door, not just one.
Yeah, but it doesn't always mean there's two people there to do it.
Well, I'm saying, but I would encourage that, so we don't get injuries until we get it fixed.
Of course.
All right, I'll move purchase order 1811 to Overhead Door Company for $2950 to replace two garage door openers.
Seconded, all right, any further discussion?
So the solenoid for 374, that doesn't go to waste, right? Doesn't get thrown out, that was one of the ones, that was the one that got burnt out, that's...
That will be used being replaced.
Can we salvage that piece?
Why not, we can ask them for that, and just say, that's a new piece, it would be the same piece that could go on if one of the other ones failed yet. So if that's the case, it may be replaced by the end of the week, if that's the case, you say, if there's some painting on it salvageable that we may be able to use for the other doors, we will request that, we'll just keep it in the station. At least the solenoid, the solenoid was not big money, it was because there was an emergency call, the labor rate was a cut.
Oh, okay. Oh, so it's not like a solenoid, it's $300?
Hundred bucks.
Okay. So you can't just run down to Sears and get a half, half horse, joking.
Run down to Sears.
Oh, there is no Sears.
There is no Sears anymore, you're going to have to go somewhere. All right, so no other questions? All right, so, and this is going to come out of station, station maintenance, all righty. All those in favor say aye?
Aye. So, we talk about station maintenance, door issues. We probably spent $4,000 on doors since the beginning of the year. And I guess the heating issues, I mean, we deal with all comes out of the same line. So, that line's going to be off the postheating exhaust system. So we're on the same page, because I had been, I had been looking at that, and not too good for this time. So, I think this is one of the invoices that needs to go with the first PO. Do you have the other one with it, did I get it down?
No.
The guy is, the parts were supposed to be coming in today, if not by the end of tomorrow, so we're going to try to arrange that, this is done by the end of the week, so a little bit ahead of curve on that part. Well, next thing is our heating issues.
Do we have a motion to non-public?
I would suggest that we go this time.
Yes, okay, can I have a motion to go into non-public?
Any motion to go into non-public to discuss the heating issues?
I'll second.
Okay, we'll call Jessica.
Jessica, here.
Where's the clock?
Didn't you say, oh, it's not working?
6:53.
It's 6:53, yeah. Yeah, I know, I'm looking, we know it's not there.
I think we'll be about 24:70. I will make a motion.
Wait, 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 what time did we get started?
Lieutenant, we go to...
7:54.
And it's 7:50? 7:54?
That's what my phone says.
Oh, you mean come back out?
Come back out of...
Oh, she said, what time did we get started, though? Oh, you mean now?
Yeah.
Oh, oh, yeah, that's fine. I thought you might want me to first one out.
6:53.
Okay, all right.
One hour and one minute. Okay, so now we have purchase order for SEMO.
Yep, move purchase order 1818 to SEMO Electrical.
Seconded.
But I didn't finish saying what.
I rescind my seconded.
For $2,470 for needed electrical upgrades for fire station.
Seconded, okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye. Just the one thing with this final PO for this time, again, that's going to be on the station maintenance line, and with all the things that have been, we had worked the last few months, that will about exhaust that line. So we're aware, so we all have to cross our fingers for the next nine months that we have an issue.
Agreed.
Because that's one line I've always kind of waited for, in September, before I decided to start. Ready, this year it's all trouble, it's, and then we can start the other one.
All right, anything else?
That's all that we have for you, what do you have for us? Want me to keep this, this is a certificate of insurance from CAV, do you want me to just hold on to that once we get further into this project, or would you like to take possession of this?
What are they doing for you?
These would be the people that would do tank removal. I'll hold on, all right, give it to you.
I'll take it.
Whichever way you would like, they supply us with that, so they're all fully certified, that's their info.
Okay, thank you.
Right, that's what I'm saying, if she wants to keep possession and go through this process, or we, either way. It's like a whole pile of stuff with that going down, so...
Very good. All right, okay, anything else?
That's all we have.
None else? Okay, thank you very much for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
But there's a purchase order?
Yes.
Okay, I'll move on, purchase order 1896 to the city of Dover for $700 to replace tires on Cruiser 72.
Seconded. Any discussion?
No.
Okay, do we know, do we know who this vehicle is? This isn't, clearly, this is not the one that would go away.
No, 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 and they were nearly bald.
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
They're gone, but we didn't pay structure on here, was that just a holding?
You have wanted to talk about it, it's up to you whether you want to talk about it or table it. Like, they're gone, so...
Was that about? Okay, why don't we table it to the next, to the next one? Because that has to go in the non-public as well, right?
Is that the pay structure?
Yes, getting tabled, yes. Firefighters is non-public, stipends, elected officials are public.
Okay, I can table it, tell them.
Yeah.
Jessica? Okay.
Yep.
All right. Recreation.
Okay, so you have a copy of the registration packet before you. The rec committee met last week and finalized this, and have approved this to come before you. I didn't know if you felt the need to approve it or not, the committee's been through it, it's, I would say, a pretty good division. It does, you know, and the last sheet's a waiver. They are hoping to get this out in the public tomorrow for Election Day, and to open registrations on the 15th, so...
Should we have a COVID-19 contingency plan?
For everything, potentially.
I mean, for, like, for this?
Yes.
So that we can say now, if, if something happens, we'll get you your money back, or whatever, I don't know.
It's a, it's a discussion, for sure.
Yeah.
What do you think the likelihood of schools closing is?
The market closed.
It's getting closer.
My, my work is very, very concerned. Did you see crude today? Dow Jones closed.
Oh, yeah.
And that was crude. Today.
Wow. I'm okay, I reviewed it, I'm okay with it, there's been a lot of hard work going into this, and I think that, I think we only can go for what we know today, and getting it go through, and if things change that are out of our control, we will have to adjust that at the time. I, I, you have a very valid point, because I think we're all in uncertainty about this, but I think that we have to...
Well, I think, I think it's worth having a plan, it's to, you know, the committee, I think, should discuss, you know, for the board's approval, and recommend to the board what a plan might be. And that's something that should certainly come in the upcoming meetings, if, you know...
We should probably put a note, send a note to Kelly, just to make sure this is under the gender and come up with some suggestions, like what we have to do if that, if it happens.
I mean, as it, as it states here, the tuition fees are not refundable, so I don't know if we should offer a refund if there's a pandemic. There's a hand up on the crowd. There was a hand up.
It wasn't when I looked, it wasn't. Put it back down with fear, I think. Yes, yeah, yeah.
So, it says funds are non-refundable, that's after June 15th, when registration closes. So...
I would think we'd hear way before then, if we're going to have a, have a problem, just based on what is happening on a day-to-day basis, so...
So...
Even after the 15th, if something happens within our own community, I would think that people would be appreciative that we didn't have that.
Right.
I, I, I don't know, so much uncertainty with this, yeah, so...
My point is, I don't think we need to offer refunds for something that is, may or may not happen, right?
Right, I, yeah, yeah, but I think something that we kind of have to put in, that it would, you know, it will be beyond our control, and that we would have to be doing it based on what we were told by our government, and whoever, or our, or state, or...
There will be recommendations.
For sure.
You know, weekly, about what's going on.
Yeah, so I would say, we, I would like to make a recommendation that we pass this to going forward, so they can start getting their program up and...
Absolutely, this looks great.
Running, and I think it looks good.
Really thorough.
Yeah, they've been doing really a lot of... They've been doing really a lot of hard work. So I think we should make a motion to accept this and just.
So moved.
Seconded. Okay, so, any other discussion? Okay, so we're making a recommendation to accept the registration package for the two thousand twenty summer, as long as it's on our REC program. All those in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Okay, it is passed, so. Compensation.
Well, if we can go back one to job.
I'm sorry?
There was discussion at the last REC meeting about whether or not the REC director position would be posted. There's the REC, there's the summer REC director, and then there's the year-round REC director position. The REC committee would like to hire the summer, last year's summer REC director for the same position.
They would recommend that the Board of Selectmen hire.
Yes, yes.
They're not hiring for.
They understand that. They, they would like for that person to be hired, for you, for you all to do that. So that is before you, but I know that you, at a previous meeting, had wanted to post the, I believe the committee, and I might be looking to the audience, was wanting to post the REC director. Posi, I'm trying to remember, did I, did I get this right? You, you had wanted to, to post the, the part-time annual position. They would like to offer that also to last year's summer person.
I would like to still post it. I'm not saying that it wouldn't be someone that we would consider, but I would like to have our options available.
Okay.
So that's, you know, and I'd like to post it, but of course, we are waiting until tomorrow to see where we were.
Right.
Well, we still don't have an approved job description for this year-round position, approved by the committee and then approved by the select board.
So that needs to happen soon.
Okay. So, but then it will be posted, okay. What, what is your recommendation to the board about hiring last year's summer REC director to continue as the summer REC director?
I think consistency is, is a good thing, and to having another person who was there last year to come forward. I think she did a really good job, so I am not at all opposed to hiring her back, if she's willing to come back. So I would say that we can, I would say we would recommend hiring or making an offer for her to come back.
So would, would you like to, would somebody like to move in that direction, then, that we hire her for?
Let's put her name on it. Her name's Melanie.
Melanie Kent to return as the summer recreation director for the same salary as last year.
Correct.
Is someone making a motion to that?
I'm requesting or suggesting a motion.
So moved.
Seconded. Okay, so is there any discussion on that? Has, have we got confirmation that she's even interested?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So any discussion at all?
No. I think she did a good job, and I, I agree that having the same person do it is only gonna make things better.
Okay. So all those in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Okay, so motion's passed, that we will, the select board will offer some.
I will get a, offer a letter for.
So that will come from the Board of Selectmen?
Yes.
Okay. Now, what about the assistant director? We don't have a returning one, correct?
We don't know that yet.
Okay.
That person who did it last year is not sure what her plans are for the summer.
Okay, so should we post it?
Yes.
That was the will of.
That was the will of the committee? Okay, you can speak, as we're talking about, but we are on the REC committee. Okay, so I think we should post it, and if she decides that that is what her desire to come back is, she should get a, in my opinion, she should get kind of a, not an entier, but a, she should be highly considered, because she was a very good assistant director, as well as working with the director, so we should take her seriously.
Is, did, did their, does their employment terminate at the end of the summer?
Yes. Their temporary positions.
Yeah.
So they're rehired or not every year?
Yeah. So, but we can, we, we don't have a, we should at least post it, so we don't have to make a.
And that job description will be the same for last year, so if there's no objection, we can post it the same way.
Okay, and so also counselors, they, there was, I saw there was a request for the counselors to be made offers. Again, though, that has to come from us, not from them.
Understood.
Okay.
Yes.
Do we have names of who they want?
Well, you had, you, you and I had discussed having the REC directors' input about that. So my understanding is that the REC director that you just hired would be happy to have, I believe, five of those people back.
Okay. So I just don't want them, the, the REC committee members, to be offering positions, so.
Yes.
Once they decide, and with the information from Melanie of the five that she would like to have come back, then we can advertise for the amount that we believe we need to have on top of the five, if they take them.
Understood. I think we ought to wait on the counselors, because there's still discussion about pay. So let's meet with the REC committee again and get confirmation of counselor names and what the suggested pay rate is, so that you all can approve.
All at the same time?
Deal, because of, yes.
Yes, that works for me, okay. So that's what the compensation was, is the.
Is, well, it's that, but it's also, we don't need to, well, this is a board discussion as well as a REC committee discussion. And it, and for now, it's probably really with the REC committee, but compensation for the year-round REC director.
Oh, this is the year-round one?
Well, you know, this all can, can apply to multiple scenarios with REC. But the board, if the board wants to suggest something to the committee, ultimately, the select board is gonna approve whatever the suggested number of hours would be for this person and what the pay rate would be. You can wait for the REC committee to suggest or request that to you, or likewise, you could, or conversely, you could suggest to the REC committee what you think is reasonable or a cap. And, and the reason, and, and you don't have to. I throw that out because there's discussion, you know, we brought up at the last meeting that they are considering rates that might be alarming to other staff working for the town, because they may, at the select board's discretion, have that entire team REC budget amount at their disposal. So depending on how many hours you think you're getting, you could potentially pay some, you, you could pay somebody for a few number, a few hours at a bigger rate, or more hours at a lesser rate, but the rate needs to be kind of in line with what other people earn around here.
So I want clarification. The REC, the part-time REC director will be reporting to the, you as a town administrator or the Board of Selectmen, it's not reported to the REC committee? Because it's part of the REC committee, but it's not reporting to the REC committee?
That's completely true, but that's another thing that the board ought to be thinking about, that it's either me or the board.
I mean, he's a part-time employee, it's, it, so a, a committee is a committee, it's not a, it's not a.
They're not, they don't work for the town, so.
I'm not sure they don't always get that, though, I don't think they understand that thoroughly.
Well, it's been a recurring kind of question. It's odd, and it's kind of problematic that they are kind of a volunteer-run department, and it has its structural challenges in that way.
So I think that we can discuss compensation as of war later, but.
Let's see if the budget passes.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that too.
That too, yeah, so then we'll, so we can bring this up at the next meeting, after the vote goes through, and that's part of it, so.
And I think that, it's my opinion that we should be setting the rate and the hours.
Well, you will be, but you can either do so after hearing their suggestion, or you can.
But they're not, it's suggestions to us, but we are the decided power. So I just want to make sure that was clear, so. Okay, so we will keep that on there. Can you put next to it, so we don't forget that it's the part-time REC director?
Yes.
Approving and posting registration package, that's what we just did.
Yes.
Yeah, so that's good, okay. And was that all the other, that's all the things that we, so we are gonna get the, the assistant REC directors posting out?
Yes.
And see, and, and she certainly has.
And she.
Every right to go apply for, but we just need to get.
And just in case she's not interested.
And then we'll wait until Melanie accepts the other one, and then we'll have a conversation between the, well, you and me in the, in the REC committee about who we're gonna recommend carrying forward to the board.
Yes.
And we should do that soon, so we don't lose potential people.
Yes.
Okay, very good.
Agreed.
All right. Any other questions about REC?
No.
Jess?
Nope.
Okay. Okay, very good. Stormwater Asset Management Engineering Firm.
So we did the request for qualifications, as we were directed to do through this process, for the SS Asset Management Grant that we've been approved for. Of course, nothing can really happen until we find out whether it passes tomorrow, but I am looking for approval from the board to move ahead with an engineering firm that understands also full well that nothing really happens if it fails tomorrow. So we received four requests for qualifications from, we, we request, sorry. We received two qualifications from, from two different firms, Hoyle Tanner Associates and Wright Pierce. Both have experience with the town, both have worked for both the town, and, actually, I take that back. Wright Pierce has worked for the Water District and not the town. HDA has worked for both the district and the town. Both firms are very qualified to handle the project. It's not a particularly complicated project as far as their skill sets go. The Stormwater Committee reviewed the proposals over two meetings, and last week agreed to go with Hoyle Tanner. That is the select board's decision to make. They are requesting of you that we be able to move forward with Hoyle Tanner.
So should we wait until that warrant passes or it doesn't pass, or do, can we?
I don't, I, I would prefer that you decide, and then if it fails, then it'll become so, and we don't do anything with it, yeah.
Yep.
So, looking for a motion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll move that we appoint, hire Hoyle Tanner Associates for the Stormwater Asset Management Grant, should it pass.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Town election select board coverage.
So you, you started to coordinate with me what your availability is for tomorrow, and I just wanna see if there's been any movement in that schedule. Suzanne Hureid is willing to step in for any time that there isn't another board member present, if you wish to delegate her to do so. Again.
Mine is pretty firm of when I can. I will be there right after work, but I can't leave early tonight, just because of my, what's happening this week, so.
Yeah, I was planning on being there seven to eleven thirty.
Okay.
I cannot be there.
You cannot be, she can be there anyways, can't she? She's on the ballot, can she be in there?
She's not on the ballot.
I, she did.
Oh, you, you, you can be there, you, you can be there. You just wouldn't have anything to do with ballots. You couldn't, like, give out ballots, or help put them in the, in the, in the voting machine, or anything like that.
Did she count?
No. No.
Oh, okay, ah.
Oh, go vote.
Go vote, yeah, sure.
All right.
All right, so, so that would leave an opening of, did you say eleven thirty to five?
Until about five, okay. That's fine, she said she was available to do that, so I will.
Yeah, for some reason, I can get out early, I will, but I don't think that's gonna happen.
Okay. That's fine. Thank you.
Okay. All right.
I just wanna, I, I left, I thought I had put welfare back on the agenda, but I don't see it there. I don't need, if we could do that in non-public along with the legal and number eight at the end of the meeting, there's no action to come, but I just wanna give you an update.
Okay. Okay. Policy review, purchasing policy and ethics. Did we get an ethics work?
No.
Okay, so.
You have not, so it's been a standing item there as a placeholder, but I haven't found, you know, so I haven't found a good one. This is the conversation about how you could have an ordinance. If you were to have an ordinance, it would have to go through town meeting, and that's a way bigger, broader thing. Or you can have a policy. I, I haven't yet found a good policy. I'm finding places that lean more toward an ordinance.
Okay, all right. It's eight twenty, do we want to be doing work on this policy?
Not if there's a long discussion, but.
I know exactly that.
Like, I thought at least one or two of you were, like, pretty, like, if you wanted to just approve it, if you're at that point, and I don't know how much discussion you think there is.
I was going through it, again, that's my opinion, I don't really go through it, but I, I am.
Would you like to give me your edits, and then I can share with the board a new copy?
Oh, that's a possibility, okay, why don't I do that?
Okay.
I'll send you an email with what my proposal is, and then, yeah, that's, that's good.
Have you looked at it at all, Jessica?
I have looked at it, yeah, and I, I like the way it is, but I'll wait and see here, I'll just.
Okay, very good.
I'll redline it, so you can see.
Yep.
What the changes are.
Okay, very good, so we can, I'll do that. Okay. Board member activities and updates. All else?
The election, of course, tomorrow. I think I missed every other meeting I planned to go to, which is Stormwater. Yeah, I think that's.
Yeah, I don't have anything this week, like, election, other than, no, I don't have anything, except election, which I don't really have.
So that's good, I guess. Town administrator?
It's been very busy. There's been a lot, I've been sending you a lot of emails about nitrogen. There, there was the public hearing with EPA and DES at DES a couple of weeks ago. There's been a lot of movement since then. The public comment period has been extended until the beginning of April, so that part's good. I would encourage you all, if you wish, to respond in some way to that, and you can let me know if you want help with that. I have a good draft going of my comments, but they're gonna be extensive and detailed, and I still have some things that need to get incorporated into them, because there's a lot to say about it. What, what was alarming about the public hearing is the lack of response from other small communities, and small communities are gonna get hit disproportionately harder than larger communities. There's gonna be an enormous, an enormous economic impact because of the cost of it. Dover estimated that the additional sewer rate to the hospital would be fifty thousand dollars a year, and thirty thousand dollars to Liberty Mutual. And so for, you know, for businesses that live in these twelve communities, they have a high incentive to leave. And, and so that, those rate increases would also be on the average, like, the residents as well. And so if businesses leave, then that's gonna increase the burden on the residents. So it also essentially stops growth, because you're capped at nitrogen, and any additional people would increase your nitrogen. So it, it's kind of a growth ordinance of sorts. It also denies people property rights to develop. There, there are some things about it that don't really seem possible. So the communities are asking for a peer review of the science, because DES and EPA are explaining, you know, calculating its costs to be very different from what the engineers and consultants working for these communities have found them to be. So that is of some concern. The other concern is that the nitrogen levels that they are requiring that we meet are going to put Great Bay at about ocean levels of nitrogen, which isn't necessary. That's extraordinarily low, and Great Bay, because of its unique character and its very tidal nature, could hide, it could handle higher nutrient loading than other estuaries. And so it doesn't seem to be, so the marker, the, the Canary and the Coal Mine that everybody's looking at is eelgrass, and how well eelgrass is doing. looking at is eelgrass and how well eelgrass is doing, but it's not really clear that nitrogen alone is killing the eelgrass, or that the nitrogen has to reach this low level that they're saying in order for the eelgrass to return. So for that reason, the communities are trying to stay united, and I would suggest that we stay part of that in requesting a peer review of the science, so that if we're moving forward, we're moving forward for a purpose that will have a proven result and meet the goal. So in any case, so there's a lot to say about written comment. I'm working on that. I'm working with other communities on that. I attended a meeting last week with our representatives from our congressional delegation, who are going to EPA in Washington tomorrow on behalf of the 12 communities to talk about the peer review of the science and funding, funding. So what's interesting about this nitrogen permit is that it's an adaptive permit, which means that a community has to reach a certain nitrogen limit, and it can do so through wastewater, or it can do so through non-point sources, or a combination, which is really great to have flexibility, but that would... that has strange implications and wrongs for where the Water Sewer District is a different entity, and we would be responsible for each other's numbers, but we can't really compel each other. And if the voters in one place don't approve something, then the ramifications for the other would be quite grave. So there are a lot of unanswered questions about that, but with regard to Stormwater and what it means for the non-point sources in the town, what the town can manage is in retrofitting septic systems and banning fertilizer and reducing impermeable surfaces. So there's not a lot about that that's really workable. You can't get on private property to retrofit people's septic systems. You can't compel them. You can't... you know, we don't have the mechanisms to find them, and it's gonna cost between $15,000 and $20,000 per septic system with no funding.
To retrofit one?
To retrofit for nitrogen. That's just... so that's septic. You know, impermeable surfaces, you're gonna unpave your roads, not likely. You know, you're gonna tear down buildings. What do you do to reduce your impermeable surface? Cities and towns typically only control 8% to 12% of the land in their area. So again, there are private property implications that you can't... you have no legal authority to manage. And then banning fertilizer, you know. So they would like for us to eventually pass an ordinance that bans fertilizer. What are the ramifications? How do we test for that? What are the ramifications? Are we doing, like, drive-by-night, like, soil samples? You know, it's not really practical.
But you're trying... I mean, you've got your farmers here, too, so they wouldn't be able to use fertilizer either, is what you're saying, not just...
Well, it all depends on how you write this ordinance, but there are implications for them, too.
Exactly.
But yet, I don't know how we're supposed to compel farmers, how they're... you know, how they're... they're part of this. And to some extent, EPA will manage them separately, but we also have some responsibility toward them, too. But again, they're private property owners, so what are we supposed to do with that? It's not really clear. So the municipalities are united in being really confused in how this is supposed to be workable. So because of the enormous cost implications, particularly, you know, they're not very sympathetic to the fact that the district is pretty maxed out in its debt limit, and we'll have to foot the bill for another possibly $2 million or more in wastewater treatment upgrades. The other thing is, when you... you know, the opportunity cost. When you're putting all the money in one place, what are you not... what are you not putting money on because you have to put all your money in this one place? You know, Dover, you know, so pointedly said, "If you gave me a dollar for wastewater upgrades, it wouldn't be for the treatment plant. It would be for the infrastructure in the ground." And how, you know, they get so much extra flow in the storms, and they know they're getting a lot of infiltration. That would be way more beneficial for them. They have relating to pipes in the ground. But, you know, so you can't do that if you're directing all this extra money toward these upgrades that they're requiring. So the cost is great, so I'm prioritizing that. Then, last week, I got, very anecdotally, notified that we're in the public comment period for another EPA permit, which is called the general permit. It's something that we had in 2003 and 2008, and we were supposed to renew in 2015 and didn't. So we're out of compliance, and we need to apply for our 2015 permit. And the new permit will come online with, you know, in about a year. That has implications with regard to our landfill and the transfer station, but then we also have responsibilities to figure out if we have any industries that operate in Romesford that are in any of the 29 regulated categories. So that's gonna be challenging because we know that there are some of these in the mill, but, you know... So I spoke to EPA this morning and got the message that it's really just about trying. But it's a lot, and it's confounding.
It takes the pressure.
Well, to some degree, it does, but, you know, that's... I'm not sure what that really means, and, you know, that's not what the regulations say. So, you know, where does it all settle, really? So my message for the board is that we're gonna really need to pay attention to the closed landfill this year. And as much as you already know that there's not leftover money, given what's happening with our facilities, you know, we're gonna probably have to start budgeting at least for what is it gonna cost to get it surveyed and get an engineering firm out there to check it out and do some tests and things like that, which we're likely to have to do annually going forward. The transfer station, we're gonna have to do things, you know, mostly around reporting, but we can... so if we can, you know, if we can prove that the landfill was capped appropriately, then we can essentially say so and be done with its permit, it seems. That doesn't mean that we're out of all of its regulation for DES purposes, but as far as the general permit for EPA goes.
How are you gonna prove that?
With whatever the documents from the engineering firm that we would pay to go look at it. The transfer station, we would be under regulation from that if everything was completely undercover. So what's promising, I hope, about that is that, as Schaefer, the regional planning, when we were talking with... one of the panelists was from NARA, and we've gotten containers from them before and the scales through their grant program. We suggested to him that it would be really helpful if their grant program funded Quonset Huts, because the problem with recycling now is really about storage and how roll-off containers and those kinds of containers are not very conducive to moving things around with a forklift. And he agreed, and there's a good chance that they'll redirect their funding and do Quonset Huts soon.
Nice. Cool.
So that would help a lot, and then that would also help for this permit. So in any case, I've been quite absorbed in EPA conversations and trying to regionalize waste, talking to communities and communities talking to us about what we do and how they can do that. We're doing really well for right now, but we're not doing as well as we could be if we could capitalize on markets with volume, and we could all benefit from doing this all together. And, like I said, with the capacity of waste management being finite, we ought to be planning for what comes next. So I'm trying to keep that door open and moving. The other news is that we know that there is a trouble spot on Locust Street going out to the river that we need to have camera, those pipes that are likely collapsed.
Yeah.
It is the goal of the Stormwater Asset Management Grant to assess the structures under the ground, which would include that area and those things.
Oh, good.
And so I don't want to promise that we can get it funded through the grant, but it may be that... it may be that we can. The question is, if we make sure that we're focusing on all the cammering or detailed cammering, then we're sacrificing something else. So just know that that's potentially an option. There's also a different kind of cammering that doesn't crawl, but it zooms, which is less expensive, and so that may be able to stretch dollars out, so.
That is something that we absolutely have to do one way or the other, spring and summer, right?
Well, we need to get it cammered, yes, but if we can get it cammered through the grant. So and maybe we can't because maybe the timeline's not gonna work, and maybe we need to get it done before the grant money can make it happen. I'm not sure, but I'm kind of hoping we can make the best use of dollars there.
Okay, good. And I know we should at least do it before winter comes again.
I'm hoping that we're gonna have a plan to remediate some of it even this year, you know, because we don't want to go... we were lucky with a mild winter that we didn't lose that road.
Yeah.
But if we had last year's winter, we might have, you know, we're gonna lose the road at some point, potentially, if we don't fix that problem. So as much as we don't want to do that now, I don't know, you know, how much we can accomplish. Once we get an engineer to look at it, we can try to determine if there's a part of it that we can do. Likely, you have to do the whole thing, and I don't know that we can afford that, but we'll see when we get there.
Okay. That's it? Okay. Community input? Yeah? All right.
Do we have any folders besides...
There are things in there, yes. Thank you.
Not to belabor that.
Purchase order number 1817 to Lovell Computer Services for 10 hours of IT services for $760.
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Purchase order number 1816 to Allstate Parks, Napster State Parks Bus Pass Program Coordinator for 10 passes, $235 total for Camp Rauling.
I'll second that.
Any questions?
No.
This is the bus pass, right?
Okay.
There is 10, so in case we have to take two buses, we'll have enough.
Okay, all right.
If you could also please sign the sheet underneath it, because it's kind of like a quote, a contract or something.
Right here? All right. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
That is all.
I'll make a motion that we go into non-public for RSE 91A, 413, section 2, letter... it's an L, aren't I?
It's L.
L for legal.
Seconded. Jessica? Yes. Denise? Yes. Miles?
Yes.
Okay, we're in non-public. What time is it? It is 8:37. 8:37.
Time is technically 7:37.
Yeah, I know. Isn't that weird? Somebody's got a...
No.